Could I get a motion to adopt an agenda? Todd first, Jason second, all in favor? First one is both of office are newly elected board members, which includes Jason DiGianni, Stacy Combs, and Robert Presley. So Jason, we'll start with you first. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of member of Board of Education.
Of member of the Board of Education.
And the Shenandoah Central School District in Clinton Park.
And the Shenandoah Central School District in Clinton Park.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I do solemnly swear, I do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge, and that I will faithfully discharge, the duties of the office. The duties of the office. Of member of Board of Education. Of member of Board of Education. And the Shenandoah Central School District in Clinton Park. And the Shenandoah Central School District in Clinton Park. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of member of Board of Education.
Of member of Board of Education.
And the Shenandoah Central School District in Clinton Park.
Shenandoah Central School District in Clinton Park.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Okay. Next, we will take the election for the President of the Board of Education. Are there any nominations?
I would like to nominate our colleague, Dan Stevenson, for his second year as President of the Shenandoah Central School District Board of Education. Probably one of the most challenging years I've ever seen this past year, and as a new Board President, definitely brought everything together, kept our message going, kept things definitely on track. A lot of moving parts that we've never seen before. We're working closely with the superintendent administration. We excel. So in the Time Genius article, we made major changes in how we taught. We didn't just try to muddle through. We actually changed how we taught. And all of our employees, all of our teachers, all of our students shined. And our teacher. So we get the record to have that on your belt. And I don't think a previous president ever has on it this year, so good for you. The first year for Board President is often about finding your voice. That's the challenge, how do you get it to work? It's new, you definitely shine. Second year is taking advantage of the fact that you now have a voice. You now have a one-year past year. And we look forward to seeing what you can do and all the great things that are going to be forthcoming. So thank you for your time.
Is there a second? All in favor? opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'll stand with you.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of President of Board of Education.
Of President of Board of Education.
And the Shenandoah Central School District in Clinton Park.
And the Shenandoah School District in Clinton Park.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you. So thank you. Proud, thank you so much for that introduction and all those thoughts. Yes, it was a crazy year. We excelled in many ways that, like I said before, it was an, oh my God, what are we going to do to, wow, look what we did. So, and I know we will continue that. Our motto, as we work together, is partners in progress. And I believe in that. And that will be my mantra again, as we go through the next year, 21, 22. So thank you all for your support, and I look forward to another extraordinary year. So can I have a motion as we look for Vice President of this Board? Can I have a motion?
I'd like to nominate Gusta. I filled in last year when we had a board member leave, and it was great. But I think Gusta has a lot of drive. I think you and Gusta will work really well together, keep each other in check. And I think it would be a great experience for you to learn from Deanna as well. So, am I nominating?
Thanks, Tom.
Can I have a second? Jason? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Vote for passes. Gusta, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, so we need to square Gusta, ready? Is that me to you?
Kathy.
Kathy, all right. So I'm ready for you.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Vice President of Board of Education.
Of Vice President of Board of Education.
And the Shenandoah Central School District in Clinton Park.
And the Shenandoah Central School District in Clinton Park.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Sure.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the position of Superintendent Schools.
The duties of the position of Superintendent Schools.
And the Shenandoah Central School District in Clinton Park.
And Shenandoah Central School District in Clinton Park.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Now, this is always exciting for me. I always, it's just, it's a new year, it's a new, you know, I feel energy, great. And just sitting here with just six other colleagues that had the passion. That had the passion and the drive to do what we're supposed to be doing, and that's here for the students, and making their experiences as great as we possibly can. So just here's to another year. So here we go. Gusta, any thoughts?
I just want to thank my board colleagues, and I'm looking forward to this next chapter with you. And I think we'll bring out the best in each other. And here we go.
Okay, so with that, can I make a motion to adopt an agenda? We will not?
Oh my God.
You sure you want to hear?
You can't change it now.
All right. Here we are.
Just go ahead and.
All right, we all have assignments, so we'll make sure this happens. And as we're doing that, I'm going to start with the Board of Education reports. Let's do that. Do you have anything you want to comment on tonight, being our first new board member? No pressure.
No pressure. I just want to say that I'm excited to be here. I'm really looking forward to learning everything there is to learn, and working with you guys. And yeah, I'm excited. I can't wait.
Gusta?
Welcome, Stacy. Great to have you here. Again, thanks for every, thanks for the sort of confidence, folks. I just wanted to acknowledge our graduation a few weeks ago, which was just fantastic. It was really special being at home. I think it was special for the graduates as well, to not only be together, but to be at home. So, yeah, that's pretty much it. It's kind of still here, because it was that good. Last year was great, but this last few weeks ago was really great. So thank you to Mr. Gustaf Noni and his team for all of their amazing hard work. It was just another showstopper.
So I also felt the graduation was amazing. It's a beautiful day. I won't say a lot, because I feel like Gusta said it often. I wanted to say, thank you for keeping the bar hot. That was really, that was really special. We've been talking about that for a long time. Thank you to welcome our new officers, Deanna and Gusta. And also welcome our new board members. Well, Bob, welcome back. And welcome our new board members, Jason and Stacy. And I wish you a rewarding experience as leaders of all this board and from our community. I, you know, we all work for the same goals, and that is for equitable and quality education for our students, for all of our students. We're all here for that reason. And thank you for making a sacrifice, but also thank you to your families. They're not here, but hopefully they get this message. They are also making the same sacrifice. It's not in the given way that they're giving you up. And I would very much appreciate that. We also appreciate you being here, but also for what they're doing to support you. So welcome on board, and good luck.
Probably depends on who you ask in my family if they're making a sacrifice. Thanks. Looking forward to my first full year on the board. So very excited to be here from the beginning and start on this. And yes, graduation was incredible, and to the team putting it on. It was flawless and smooth, like clockwork, which is just, considering all the moving parts and all the people, and last-minute changes and guidance changing, incredible work. So that's worth noting.
While going to know everything everybody said, as the first parent of a senior to speak, I will say thank you. I mean, everybody said it was great and everything, and that was, but as a parent, thank you to you and the district for everything. Graduation was awesome. Bob?
Hey, I also want to say congratulations to Stacy, Jason, to our two new board officers. Thanks for all you're doing. And I look forward to a great new year. At our last meeting in June, I think Dr. Robinson really provided some important comments, how this year coming up will be very different. Since I've been here, it's been an environment of tight budgets, where we have a tight staff limiting us, and we have the cost of paying people properly as educators. It's incredible what we can spend. This year will be much different, because we have quite a bit of money coming at us. I think his comments about pacing ourselves and making sure that we take full advantage of everything that's coming our way, very important. But I look forward to seeing what we can bring forward this next year, that will change how, significantly improve our year and your students' year. I think that's going to be one of the big prizes this year, something to take advantage of. The other thing is, I look forward to what our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee will bring forward. They set the tone, and they've got some ideas that I think will also carry us much further, because I had a read of them, like they have. And I think our student community has a much better resilience. I think that's the word that's we're hearing now. Post-COVID, I think there's an attitude that will come forward this year from students, that they will really recover strong. People want to do that. People want to get the COVID mentality behind it. All great things. I look forward to how we will go through and deliberate on the comments needed to make it happen as a board. And let's start off and have a great evening. So thank you.
Yeah, so as I said, congratulations to our new board members, our appointed and now new board member. And Gusta, congratulations. So as we get going here, Dr. Robinson's going to talk about, you know, what the goal process. I know they went, just went through a week. As soon as graduation is over, they all step into what I think of as a leadership academy. And they start their year again. But it's not just starting your year again, it's re-envisioning what that year will look like. And I always, I remember asking, I'm like, no, you kind of brand it every year. It's amazing to me of how you twist and turn, but, you know, it's the same outcomes. And we're always challenging, you're poking holes in. So I look forward to that challenge and how you're going. It's always amazing to me how we rebrand every year, but we always come out with the same extraordinary product and outcome. So I look forward to that. Okay, so with that then, I'll just read my board. I don't know if we have any comments. All right, so we're not, we're not going to go through. All right, Dr. Robinson, you have your report.
Thanks, Mr. Stew. So we had tier four wireless mouse here, but I couldn't find one to save my life. Hint to a new IT person. And if you couldn't find batteries for the one that was kind of pseudo. Nothing that Ray has to worry about having batteries and all this stuff in his back pocket. So I'm actually going to send it to the board as mine, if I'm not wrong. So one of the things that we talk about is our goals development process. And I mentioned a lot of votes in that, that we started conversations past season with our leadership team. And it wasn't necessarily about goals, it was about reflecting on the year, having people engage in conversations around topics that would drive the year. But in a way that was, I would use for relaxing. What I mean by relaxing, not like, you know, people slumming in their chairs, but psychological relaxing. Where you're not coming into something with, okay, you gotta have a to-do list at the end of the first. We would just come in and just open your minds and have a real thought or conversations, and have colleagues lead different discussion. It was powerful. We did that at SPAC, at a new facility at SPAC. We should be trying to do offsite someplace that kind of changed the perspective, because when you're in the building, you, someone has to leave, because something comes up in the office, and this, and this, and it's not the same. So it was really a great way to end the year, and then to springboard into the next year as well. So on the 22nd of July is when we can transition into our goal document. So the presentation we have here would drive a lot of the conversation. In fact, I may remind myself, I'm going to ask Vanessa to remind me. I'm going to share with the length of the board, a book. It's not like a big book, it's like maybe, who knows, 35 pages or so, called Nine Big Questions. And it's a book that kind of, the nine big questions that places organizations, particularly schools and education institutions, need to consider as they talk about reimagining schools. Pretty Anna Shigman, with some international community work issues, and brought this to our attention. Very powerful document. In many ways, when you read it, kind of, I can go back, because it's still consistent and supportive to what we're doing as a system. So we have our administrative group, I sent it out today, reading that in preparation for our goals conversation. Because what we want to have people, we don't want to have people come in with this very linear mindset of the last two things I did, and I'm going to do two more things like it. Versus truly coming in with the open mind and recognizing that nothing we do is finite. It's not about right or wrong, it's multi-tiered, multifaceted. And so we have to have that mindset of how we look at things and what's the implication of it. So I'm going to share with the board, because I think it'd be good for you as a board to have that appreciation too, because this was driving our thought process as a leadership team. So we'll share that link with the board. It's easy, really quickly, and when you read it, wow, this just kind of makes sense for some of the stuff that we're doing. So this was driving our process here, and Deanna mentioned the theme piece of it. You know, we do have a theme piece of it, because it's a narrative, right? What's our narrative as a system? What's our narrative as we look to unfold the pages? And just a little point today, we have new teachers, new teachers, new administration orientation with Ray and Sarah and Michelle Rossin. And Sarah's a new data account girl, and Michelle Rossin, who's saying elementary principal, and even Menzies, who came in January, had Menzies in that group as well. And Elizabeth was talking through some stuff that we are going revamping on instructional side. And so Michelle was asking a lot of questions, that you know, like the requisite question people are supposed to ask. And then we had this reminder that what we're doing is not because we never did it before, it's because we're seeing this as a critical point. It's not about COVID. And give perspective, back in '08, we started having this conversation about 2020 vision, that in 2008. And here we are now, leaving 2020. So we're now embarking upon this next conversation of what does 2030 look like, what does 2035 look like? Because literally we have those kids in our system, or should be in our system in short order. So we have to be thinking that way. So as we think about, then we think about all our big processes, and how can we revamp those processes moving forward? And we're saying for these new administrators, a perfect time to be coming to the organization, is coming at a time where, quite frankly, should we unpack everything? And asking ourselves, if we had to repack, what did we put back in? Or what we do, we do, it took some exciting time in organizational culture and process wise to do it. So it's also consistent then with some of our goals, that yes, our purpose, our why doesn't change, because our why is ultimately to provide the best education for our kids. And that's also why. But how we do it, we always have to revisit that year after year after year after year, consider all the conditions on as well. So again, I'm not going to repeat this, boy, I've seen this document. So this is our district mission, this translated into graphics, it's not a budget presentation. So if you see our budget presentation, you're going to see the same thing. And the consistency in messaging is important, because the budget supports our goal, our goal drives our budget, lots and lots. It's a symbiotic relationship, right? It's so important for us to have the consistency, like to my president's statement, consistency in outcome, year after year after year. We can't have good year, bad year, good year. We have to be consistently, at best consistently, ideally each year getting better, because we are better at what we do. So you've seen this slide as well, because this slide drives a key question that we always have to ask ourselves. You know, what else can we do for our kids? What else can we, what else do we need to take into consideration when we make a decision that ultimately want our kids to be successful? We can't have a system that only certain kids are successful, or kids with certain connections or certain whatever. We need to have a system that all kids are successful. And it's still such an important conversation, because when we look on the outside, that's not necessarily a conversation people have. People have a very selfish conversation. What's good for me and mine, and not necessarily good for ours. But here, we got 10,000 that we have to consider, and what's in the best interest of each one of them all the time. And so this kind of drives that piece of it. So how are we looking at, how we make decisions, how we use resources, what's the goal, and all we're looking at through from the equity piece of it? So Stacy, as a new board member, needs more time to understand alphabet suits of all our acronyms. She should get the time, but I'm not going to drag Deanna to sit through the same experience as Stacy, because it'd be unfair for Deanna to sit, it's a waste of my time. And it may not be the best use of time her ever heard there, saying, oh, this is awful. I already know now you're distracted by that. So I use that example, because the same way we have to unpack how we provide services to kids, and how we use staff to most effectively get to the point that we need to have. So this kind of speaks to those kind of things that administrators we have to ask all the time, how we drive resources. Okay, what happened here, Ray? So that's like the first test of an IT person, right? Said problem loaded. Okay, let's try this again then. Signed out. So Ray completely kicked me off. Let me just try it one more time. It's weird. All right, so maybe I have to stand up here. Maybe I have to stand up. So again, so one of the things, and this piece has been reported, and the board has also seen this too, because one of the things that we just, one of the things that we try to have is consistent process everywhere, to kind of drive how we do things. And so this notion of success for all, it kind of gives you as a board that we have our missions that drive us. When we come up with these, the missions are goals, right? The five district goals. Those don't change. We changed the language about five years ago, six years ago, we had another committee, and we could change the language. So we changed goals language, but the meaning doesn't necessarily change, but the language updated to be consistent at times if we look. And then we talk about the essential objectives, that every year those change. Because you want to say, okay, this is our goal. What is the essential objective? If we do these things, all the things by the way, very well, we know we're moving forward, but those essential objectives then come into one of the program level goals. So what is the essential objective? How do they translate, you want to say program level? Translate to elementary students, to elementary level, to the middle school level, to the high school level, to the district level. So all these groups are broken now, when we have each, we're broken up by groups, and we do interchange with our people across over program levels. They have these very rich conversations, saying then, okay, what are we going to do at high school about this particular essential objective? And then we start saying, because there's triangulation of apples. So everyone is working from their level towards that particular essential objective, which is great, because the whole piano notion, we're all pushing in the same direction, and we're not pulling against, pulling from each other. And then we have the response to us, as an individual now, how do I take that program level? Today, we just had a conversation with Tom Hoppings, who's a new going AP. So the middle school program level initiative, he now needs to, as a new AP, what do I do? How do I take that and run with it that falls into my leadership domain? And then it translates to each individual employees that he supervises. How does that translate into the action, the ultimate advantage, to the success that we want, which is evident outcomes for all kids? And so this schematic kind of gives you the flavor of how things unfold, 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 become much more targeted, to be targeted to the interests of the students and researchers. Does that make sense? So again, it's a constant reminder, folks, that what we do is, we're not trying to get lucky. We're leaving. You know, we cannot call something, and say, oh my God, I hope it's going to work out. No, we have pretty good confidence that it's going to work out, because we're going to do a lot of legwork to drive the outcome that we want. Because organizations are truly built to get the results we get. And so we want to make sure we build an organization to get the results that we get all the time. And so one of the first goals, I'm not going to go through, so the student classroom, and the board ultimately approves the goals. And yet, we bring all this to the board, because it's for me to say, hey, here's the five goals, and don't worry about it. I know you guys trust me, but I don't want that kind of line trust to be others. There's just too much pressure for any one person to have. And so the whole notion is then, you're a board, you say, what does that actually mean when some of our student classroom experiences? And so one of the things that we were focused on this past year, and back within that chart, is as we look to revamp our instructional domain, how do we kind of look all the things that we're doing, and build a stronger framework for it? So there's a greater connection between what we want to do from an instructional perspective, and that framework becomes those things that drive the ultimate of the student experience. But let me just give you a little concrete example, you're going to hear about it in September, from Michelle Mavilla and Rochelle Mettlet, that we have BIS plan, and we have all these. The board is going to approve those plans. Now we're going to, hey, what's that, multi-tier, Michelle talked, MTSS, multi-tier system.
Multi-tier systems of support.
Of support. And so now we're saying, okay, we have all these things that integrate, how we kind of put these in an larger context, recognizing that a student has multiple needs. And if we only keep looking at it in isolation, we may miss opportunities to better serve a student. Just give you like a little bit more concrete, negative example in your head, right? So it's not just a framework, and I'm not giving it to justice, let's just explain a lot more than once you get into goal, but just give you the sense of, we have a lot of bases happening. But each time, how do we try to make sure we put it in a way that's much more forth-facing? But in a way that makes it even worse, there's a lot of sense about all these things interfacing. So that's a big piece of it. And it has all program levels. Everyone, all program levels, so it's a great thing. Instruction deliver model, as we know, we're changing our instruction deliver model tremendously. Second level is going towards a block schedule, changes dynamics of many things. And so even at the elementary level, because of COVID, there's certain things that we have learned in terms of how we deliver instruction. So how do we bring the best of those things to the table? So those in the conversation, how do we deliver literacy differently? How do we deliver math? All those kind of things are conversations that we unpack as we go through the process. Give you some flavor, how do we bridge in the experiences, right? And not necessarily say, hey, that was then and this is now. We bridge in the experience, and constantly bridge, constantly bridge the course. So that becomes a big piece of it. And then the third one is a whole ethical matter of student learning. And that's a huge piece. You know, so we've been talking about, we changed policies seven years ago, home program debate policy. We changed those policies. People are, oh my God, you guys can't stop getting kids A's? And I remember having a conversation with a parent, who's not necessarily as nice as I would like her to be. I was like, let me ask you a question. Do you know what that A on your child's grade grade actually means? She's like, what do you mean? It's an A. I was like, but do you know what actually went into that A? Teacher could have just been nice and thought maybe because your child wore purple every day, and then like purple, I'm going to give your child an A. So does that really merit? Do you really understand what your child know, what to do in? No, you don't. So now is, you're going to unpack that. What does actually grade mean? Okay, so are we graded for grade, or are we graded for the learning? Big difference in that perspective. Big difference. And we saw some of that in the COVID piece of it. We make unpack, what do we really want kids to know and do and understand versus the market kids get that maybe not be reflective or true to what they know, do, what they know, what they understand, know, and can do, right? So those are the kind of things, if you talk about that piece of it, how do we look at gauging those things in different ways for kids? Not the traditional way, one way fits size, one size fits all, because you know, it's not A's. So this is a good example. Educational culture is a big piece of it as well, and we've been promoting diversity, creating diversity inclusive for years. In fact, I sent a nice little love note to somebody today, they probably wrote it. They actually know this. I was like, this is not a new phenomenon. We fundamentally believe that we need to prepare our students for a very global, broad global society. You know, and I still kind of refer to the Republicans of Alvin and the Chipmunks. You know, it's like, when outside the row is a hell of a lot different than the neighborhoods that a lot of kids live, like where most people around them have. than the neighborhoods that a lot of kids live, like where most people around them have similar jobs, family have similar complexions, all those kind of things. Versus when you go to a large, we don't want our kids to be shocked when they go into the world and not ready for all the wonderful things that the world brings to them. And our kids have been successful. Every now and then you think it's like, oh my God, this one of our kids is doing this, one of our, because they're going to the world with that notion that, yeah, you know what? I understand who I am. I also understand, appreciate the various factors that other people bring to the table. So it's a big part of that and also then teaches me to understand who's the kid in front of you? Who's the kid, do I really know who's Deanna Stevenson or just happen to know that Deanna is a white woman who whatever? But do I really know Deanna Stevenson? Because I know certain things about her, oh my God, didn't know that. Wow, if that's interesting, maybe you consider this. And all of a sudden at the end of those, that the teacher actually understands something about me, guess what? Their relationship forges and the learning just blossoms. Because we know that the greatest aspect to learning is the relationship between the adult and the child. All you think about all, the most effective probably teacher you remember of mine is one that you thought actually knew you cared about you. And so it's not rocket science. So how we keep doing that becomes a big piece of it all the time in the system. So the second objective piece to that is, is to then is looking at social emotional learning piece of it. And we've been talking about this again for years. And this is not the first thing on the board that we need to report it. And so this past year, we saw COVID that more and more that became the buzzword, right? And so we're always trying to delineate between, we're not going to do something because it's powerful. That's never going to be our motivation. Let's do it because it's a powerful thing to do. No, we're going to do it because it's the right thing to do, it's the necessary thing to do, because we need to do it well. So that this social emotional, you saw the presentation, Lisa Keston doing Javelin back in, some of those folks had the other day. So how do we then scale it up from a district wide perspective and have again a much more tighter systemic view of how we deliver some of those services to kids by multiple means and by multiple individuals? So that's some of the things we're unpacking that communicate, constantly be one of those kind of things is how do we capitalize on the fact that, oh my God, our community is changing significantly? And we have so many different people and resources to our community. How do we tap into the engagement of our community much more so than ever in the past? And that's a piece, probably, we had community conversations. So I think Jason, the fact that I'm going to take credit for each one, Jason wanted to go to the board. He zoom bombed about community conversations and he said, oh my God, this is what this whole thing's about. I want to be part of that. And so I said it because a lot of people, people don't understand really what school's about. And I think part of it, we also need to make sure they all sense about conversation that my president and I have been having conversations about. What's the role of a board member? What is being a board member about? People don't even understand that functionality sometimes when they decide to put their name in the app. So those are the kind of communication with many other things just to kind of give you perspective. And it's going to last two, just pick up here. So personal professionalism is as if the title is, it's kind of like who we hire and our expectation we have for them. Our profile of Shandong and Tory drivers kind of thing. And so now we always want to keep, how do we make sure we have a diverse inclusive staff? And it's important because anytime you get grouped in, that's a problem. Anytime you get everybody in the room who think, right, that's a problem, folks. I mean, you don't, one, there's no energy, two, there's no new ideas, and three, there's no progress. Versus we have a diverse perspective, people coming in, you know what? I hear you, however, this is my view of it, or this is the experience that I had and I want to bring to the table. And all of a sudden, all those things then percolates into a better brew of coffee, certainly, right? And so how do we look at that piece of it? Look at it from the standpoint of who we hire, how we hire, how we provide professional development differently? All those kinds of things drive what we do because we saw, we saw the inequities between the school districts. Is one, how quickly people adjusted to all the different variations of families and family styles, lifestyles, resources kids have. And the people who didn't do it, unfortunately, kids suck. So even looking from that very concrete example, perspective becomes important. So looking at our strategic imperative to a real person, what I mean by that, we can't say we want to do this, but we don't have the right people to do that. So how do we start looking at the big picture stuff and saying, either we're going to retool folks or as we look higher, we're going to make sure we start bringing people on board with certain skill sets, certain strengths, so we can then keep those initiatives moving forward. So looking at all the strategic initiatives, asking ourselves, do we have the capacity now? So is it something we can train people up to do or do we have to be much more strategic in terms of when we have opportunities, either replacement or otherwise, start building certain capacity moving forward as we do those kind of things, be a technology capacity or otherwise. You name it, how do we start looking at those things from our candidate pool, my profiles differently? So we build in our internal capacity so our system thrives and we're not relying on any one person to be the end all be all of any mission. Versus having remorse for people multiple perspectives. So hopefully that made some sense. And then the last piece, we're talking about the social progressive learning community that we recognize that, again, under the personnel, all that leads into is how we have people coming in with the notion of we need to be at our bare rest. We need to have a diverse perspective to create the best environment for kids to be successful. We can't have kids being, whatever, negatively impacted because of people's shadowness or biases. It's not acceptable because I don't know, as a parent, you said you give a blind faith, right? You said it many times over, that people are hitchhiking, they're going to look out for them, quote unquote, and look out for their best interest, right? So if we get it all right all the time, no, but that should be the general tenor of what we do. And when we don't, we need to understand why it doesn't occur to make those adjustments. So that progressive piece becomes very important. Unfortunately, a lot of words become buzzwords, be like, oh, what does that mean? But that means that we want experiences to get to be richer and richer and richer, more and more rich as we move forward and not less. So as you move forward, there's more things, more opportunities presented up and more resources available. Which goes to the last one, the fiscal responsibility piece. And that's a term of surprise, responsibility. It's not fiscal accountability, because accountability is after the fact. Responsibility is asking the question, what's the difference we want to make? And now we're going to decide how we best invest to make that difference, right? So it's this forward perspective, looking down the road, what we want? And then say, how do we best invest, invest resources to get to that difference that we want to make? And not after the fact and say, okay, so can we be accountable for what we just spent? And if it's close, we happy, if it's not close, we try to rationalize the way and blame it on something else. That's not leadership. Leadership is what's the difference you want to make and how do we best use our resources to effectively do so? So that's responsibilities, so that comes into strategic budgeting piece, the conversation we've had here. We went through two years of strategic budgeting, front and center. Because last year, 1920, it had a lot different between 2021 in terms of all the factors that we have. And you say 21, 22 is significantly different. But the common thread is each year, we're trying to take advantage of the situation to move the district forward. So strategic budgeting is how we need resources, effort of allocation of, we can't have good school baskets moving out of system. We can't have, and even though we still get parents saying, oh no, we bought a house to be on, want to go to that elementary school. I hear you, however, we spaced capacity, you have a little kid who's going down the hallway to that elementary school. You guys are hearing some of us coming back. You come out, it's like, oh my God, the superintendent, fire him because we bought a house only to go to this school and he tell us. Guess what? I fundamentally believe that I should be, close my eyes, is that you need to mind your own, we still have our roots and this people want, and it should be similar. Are they going to be the same exactly coming up? Because every school has a different culture. But that's the reason why the framework thing we're listening to talking about, make sure they have consistency and those kind of things. The environment piece we're talking about, guess what? Our school's kids should have a similar outcome experiences as we go, result going to get about schools. And if we're not, then we're missing the market, I'm supposed to. We shouldn't have these big divides between schools. So ethical resource drive that. So Ranjin has more teachers, why hasn't it passed, and Ranjin has more classrooms. Tisago may have more special education dollars because we have more special education programs, that's the case though. Then that, so we drive the resource, but somewhere where the program needs are located, right? So we want to make sure, it's not about, it's not about equality, it's about equity and the adjustments, the differences, treat differences differently as we move forward. And then the last one, destruction, predict development. Again, we need to know that at the end of the day, we're going to spend 180 plus million dollars and we need to know what can we expect to see moving forward today? Not 184 days from now. We need to know, that's why we plan, that's why we use this to sit and plan and how do we use resource conversation we have about federal grants. We have some insurgent money Mr. President spoke about. We need to know how will that change and enhance that experience for our kids today? Not after year three, after the grants over, then you kind of backtrack and say, so what do we get done? No, we know what we want to get done, we build the structures to realize that goal. And so that's what we're trying to do then.
The other part of this is, you talked about the strategic budgeting. It's not necessarily what we did during COVID. It's what we did years and years prior to that to be in a good spot, to not hit those bumps that high. We were able to flatline it and a lot of schools we saw couldn't do that because they didn't follow that strict strategic budgeting five years, 10 years ago. And that's key.
Absolutely, and we talk about measured approach. And that's something a lot of people think, oh, I got to tell you, we're not going to have any knee jerk reactions. We're going to take a very measured approach because you have a knee jerk reaction here, guess what you're going to have over here? Another knee jerk reaction over here. We're going to take a very measured approach, think through what we're going to do to making sure that when we make a decision, we understand the implication of that decision before we hit go. Because when we hit go, we're in execution mode, right? We're in execution mode, we're about winning the game because we already have our team and they know what we need to strategically, what we need to do to get to that point. And so that's always the objective, and you know what, yeah, that objective, you have consistency in outcomes. So it sounds like, it's not that complicated if you have a process in place. And this is probably our biggest process right now. This drives everyone's conversation, drives everyone focused to this because principals and department dads, supervisors, they take it back to their folks and ask how we contributed to this? What am I doing to make this better reality? So they barged out, meaning that the students, what does the student have to do with the school and classroom experience? A hell of a lot. Because when you walk into a space and it's nice, it's clean, it's orderly, you feel as if, wow, people actually care about me. You know, that's why Kathy was saying the picture of, hey, we're raising hay to feed the horses out here, to say that that is not the spirit we want. Because as board members sitting here now, you think in the huddle, you feel of it because you're talking about the same thing, I'm looking at you like, hey, you. Yeah, you are, and guess what? Okay, you don't get it right, but we got to make sure that he feel, you know, going to put goals out there, something to motivate. But I say that because sometimes people think that's an insult to folks. It's not an insult, it's a reality that we all have a responsibility. There could be a thousand reasons why this is taking place. But we need to unpack the reason why so we make sure that the work is done. Let's share those kind of examples because sometimes people think like, whoa, no, it's truly like the responsibility piece. If we all understand our responsibilities and how our roles impact the larger whole, we're better as a system every time. Because if we don't have a single point of failure ever, because we have many points of success. We come from at least, how do we build as much capacity to have success? So even if we have a point of failure, it's not a doom kind of situation. It's a hiccup, take a hiccup, and then we learn from it and we move forward. But we never have a single point of failure in our system where things fall apart because any one person dropped the ball or incapable, incapable of handling that is a whole role. So that's kind of gives you some sense of, these are the conversations that drive our goals making. Because once we leave in July, you start running through stuff in August, September, it's game on. You know, it's game on. You understand the why, you understand the why, and now you start engaging your folks and how do we best do it? So it becomes game on, execution time at that point. So and so it's important for you as a board to know that because when we bring on this presentation back to the board, say, here's some snapshots of some of the things that we're doing related to these goals. So you as a board know that it's a vibrant document, it's a vibrant experience that we're trying to create. So I'll stop and pause this here for the comments. My president? Anyone? Thank you. Thanks for sitting there, Ray, because we know.
It worked out well, Ray, it works anymore. Can't move anymore.
I'm glad, I'm glad Mr. Nardella is experiencing this. So he could, so I could have like this souped up technology thing here where I could have a screen there and it's connected remotely and I don't have to look over here because I've been accused as the board president is talking, the superintendent has his back turned toward. And actually, I really wasn't, I was actually looking at the screen to click next and people in the public thinking I'd be rude when I really wasn't being rude. So this is one of the things that you find out, I think, that people must receive things, right? So anyway, we have fixed all that because Mr. Nardella is here now.
All right, we're going to keep going.
So he's on you, he's on you there, the rest of you.
Claims audit, sorry. So Kathy, the claims audit reports. Minutes of the audit.
Yes.
So we're just going to, I'm going to.
Of course.
No, I don't have any creative comments. Okay, so, everybody ready? We talked about this, goals development process? I don't know.
These are just information.
Oh, my.
So. Don't worry about it.
That's why I'm asking, like Kathy, are you coming up to talk about? Does anybody want to talk to Kathy? Do we have any questions for Kathy?
No questions.
Okay. Jeez. I don't know. I was totally lost in it. All right, minutes of audit committee meeting, so that would be under Mrs. Chase as well. Naomi, do you have any comments or anything? Everything was great? And then can we throw up the resolution because I'm sure Bob would like to talk through this?
Yes.
So where the night?
Key date is Friday, 16th of July. Districts that want to submit these resolutions have to get it in by 5:00 PM. He's the right person to meet in this organization. We showed these and talked about them at the last meeting. Here we have the specific resolved, that percentage is basically our call to action. What do we want to do? This is a strong, first one is a strong message that, you know, we agree foundation aid is a good thing, but we want to make sure it's accurate and the best possible function. So that's really the call to action on that piece. The rationale is sort of a background, I include some history behind the foundation aid. It really is the cost leveling, so districts are disadvantaged and get more money to put them on par with districts that have a lot of advantages. The term we've often heard is the poor district versus the rich district. And as we've seen, it's, that's sort of defined by economics, but also there are other factors, culture, race, that limit students, okay? In the 1950s, the Supreme Court voted or declared Brown v. Board of Education, the importance of equal education. What this country did is we went through attempts to equalize education, often it involved busing. And that didn't really work. If you're asking people to send their kids to another district, that is a significant burden. And but really the right thing to do to ensure every student has a basic sound education is to use foundation aid to ensure that the poor districts or the districts that are overwhelmed with a challenging number of students get back billed or possibly given a minimum. Since it started, it's about 20 billion a year from the state. Right now, it's about, I would say, 1.5 billion short after what happened this past year in the State House. It went from a 4 billion gap to probably a much smaller gap. But now is the time to really, really think about, do you revise the formula? Do you make sure that you have much aggregate on your schools before you decide where money goes? So that's the thinking behind it. You can see the rationale is not completely done, but it gives you an idea of where it's going. So I sort of see this as two documents that we agree to continue to get the best possible document forward. And then on probably Thursday, the 15th, we send them. And it'll be with board president as your name will be on it, but contact name we need for the first one. And the second one will be Mrs. Hoffman, because she brought forward some ideas and developed the second resolution, which is focused on climate change. She brought to my attention that, you know, the state has passed the law in July 2019. Obviously, a lot of things have happened since that have sort of taken our eye off of climate change. But as we've learned particularly from our student board member through race, this is a very important topic for students. We have to get in front of it and also present in a way that make sure that we combine the desired actions on climate change in a way to continue our desires to improve education. In some cases, I think some organizations might become reactive. Other times organizations don't realize that we actually have in our district a very strong history of supporting efficient use of energy. So back when we had Mr. Dave West, he was our guy that managed all the energy control systems here in our school. He was on environmental, then he pointed out that when he came here in the early 80s, we had a certain amount of classroom space and energy bill. What happened is our classroom space went up 50% and our energy bill went down 50%. It doesn't happen by accident. It happens because we do capital budgets, we put in, you know, better windows. Okay, what does that do with your strategy? You put in better lights, you put in better boilers, okay? Five or six years ago, we had a consultant come in and said, okay, these are the things you want to do as a district and do them right away. But when you develop your capital budget, you want to really look at your E-pumps, your change, things like that. Very, very detailed topic, but if you do it right, you end up with supporting climate change while you're also reducing your costs and creating more opportunities for education dollars to go to education. So that was my opinion on sort of presenting this verbally. I think you wanted to, I think it's time for you to transition and speak about what else you want to do. I think you wanted to, you know, because there is time for you to transition and speak about what else you'd like to bring forward on.
Well, so you, you brought this forward at the last board meeting, and so I was building on what you had proposed. And that essentially is, Kathy, being able to identify data so that we can determine, you need, you need metrics, you need to be able to track, and so that people can see if it's working really, and how dollars are working. And so that's really what this is doing. And it's building on, it's sticking with what Bob had originally proposed, with focusing it, focusing on budget, being able to have metrics that we're using and that tie back in justifying which one we're proposing for, essentially that. There, there's a lot of support for this, like, like you had mentioned in July twenty nineteen. New York State had signed in a law, and it's very, it's a very ambitious address, you know, it does, it's, the, the expectations are there, but as far as guidance, that's really where this is coming at, is hopefully we'll get out in front of it. This, like, you know, I stopped that with the rationale, go any further with this, hoping to get some feedback to see if this is what, what Bob was looking at, making sure that we're still going in the right direction. I also believe, I agree with what you've shared, there's a lot that this district's doing. So I think it might, if there's time, to get feedback from the administrator, Jane Marcher, on the Space Committee. I, I know that they're doing a lot, and that there, there's, it's more than just boilers and, you know, lights and things like that. And they're looking at all of these areas, and so they, they might be able to look at this and say, oh, you know, here's some more that will support this and help give some specifics so that people will be better able to get behind it, and so that it's not too broad in the language that we're proposing, or rather the rationale. But again, thank, I did say this, but thank you for sharing this, and thank you for reaching out, working with me as I helped this, and it's, it's more of a team effort, so. I, I know that you said you wanted me to be the contact for this, but I, I still see this as, as yours. And, and I appreciate you heart making me do.
Love to be able, I know we won't be able to do it on the timeframe, but love to share some more of the students thought on it, too. Maybe you could get some feedback on that.
Well, we can put that into the documents, okay, you know, but July sixteenth is our statement as a board. Now, we, we consider this important, and here are important areas to it. When our students come back, I think that's the day on the seat community, the first meeting to say, hey, this is what we've done. What are your thoughts, students? And that there's some interesting things happening in the district. I read the paper, but that's what half the district has done, is they have received a grant to set up a charging station for electric buses. And, and that sounds great, you know, everybody goes, hey, that's a great idea. But the rationale behind it is the grant money pays for the fact that each bus each year costs you forty thousand more as a bus. So there are still things with dollars that we need to closely understand before we commit. But conceivably, you know, if we watch whatever district they're doing, because they're getting grant money to cover this, you could realize that maybe the next capital budget, or the capital budget after that, might be the time you look at, you know, buying a charging station. You might find out that that may not really work out. You really have to have your eye on, does this make sense from climate change? Does it make sense from dollars and cents? Do you want to position a lot of money and resources and find out that you're taking away from education? That's one of the concerns you should have. I think the community expects us to balance all these things out. But there is room to, to do this in a way that, you know, we would find out that, you know, we are winning the climate change battle. As we're investing in the right things, and at the same time, we're winning in the educational battle. That's kind of obviously what we want to position, and that's kind of the argument that you, you make with students is, you know, you do, you can't chase the theory that is out there. Our role is to come up with practical ways to invest our resources in this, and call it education. Okay?
That's great. Thank you again for your time, both of you. Thank you very much. Okay, any other comments or questions, Bob? All right. Consent items moving on. Treasurers report. So can I get a motion?
Just real quick before, obviously Stacy won't have a vote on this, right, since she was.
Yeah, when we, yeah.
Just on the minutes, isn't it?
At least on the minute, she won't, no. I'm assuming, did she get, yeah, she got everything on the agenda?
Did you get the, to the agenda, Stacy?
Today, to the, today's agenda? Did you see that agenda in your email before you got here tonight? No? Okay, all right, so she would, she could abstain, yep. Okay, so can I get a motion on treasurer's report? Todd is first, Jason is second. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Stacy will, you will say. So six and one abstention, Joe. Or where we saw the next, okay. Minutes, so June eighth and June twenty-second, everybody was here, with the exception of Stacy, so she'll abstain again. So can I get a motion on those minutes? Gusta's first, Bob was second. All in favor? Six and one abstention, thank you. Moving on to business items, approval of annual appointments, can I get a motion? Jason is first, Bob is second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Stacy will abstain.
And then stop with.
Go right ahead.
Only for, for Stacy's purpose, so this meeting, and we can talk about it a little bit tomorrow, so the reorganization meeting, by law, we have to do it for a certain time. So all these things, the annual appointments, just like I said, so each year, you have to reappoint certain things by law. So it's, so it's a slew of them, and, and it's, you know, it's quite a plate because by law, we have to appoint these things every year. And so, so I share everything because you probably think, oh my God, I have all these things. But a lot of them, by law, we have to do it in the go to, almost, I mean, so much vote, it's not vote because we, we vet the people who are doing it, but the process is something that happens every year this time of year.
And you will, we will go through everything, you'll understand what all this means tomorrow. Okay, so I don't want you to feel lost, like, oh my God, I'm never gonna get it. So just, you know, you're going through the motions tonight, you're listening, but you will, this will all start to make more sense as, as you've gone on. So the only reason, obviously, you're abstaining is because you didn't view it, and it's fair of you to not go on it because you haven't seen it. Good? Okay, approval of annual authorizations, can I get a motion? Todd is first, Bob is second. Comments, questions? All in favor? Six, six, four, one abstention. Authorization of bank depositories, petty cash funds, can I get a motion? First, Gusta's second, any comments or questions? All in favor? Six, all in favor, one abstention. Authorization of employee bondings, can I get a motion? Bob is first, Todd is second. Any questions or concerns, comments? All in favor? Six approved, one abstention. Approval of compensation and fee schedule, can I get a motion? Bob is first, Todd is second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Six approved, one abstention. Acceptance of Auto Club internal audit report, can I get a motion? Naomi's first, Bob is second. Any comments? All in favor? Six approved, one abstention. Establishment of scholarship funds, can I get a motion? Jason's first, Bob is second. Any comments? All in favor? Six approved, one abstention. H, inter, inter municipal agreement, quest our three internal claims auditor, can I get a motion? Naomi is first, Bob is second. All in favor? Motion passes, one abstention. I, bids, five, elementary science supplies, groceries, I, non-food items, government commodities, waste removal services, can I get a motion? Gusta's first, Bob is second. Any comments? All in favor? Six in favor, one abstention. J, contract addendum, Saratoga Center for the Family, can I get a motion? Todd is first, Gusta's second. Any comments? All in favor? Six in favor, one abstention. So I'm going to roll K altogether, one, two, and three. So Boses, copier replacements, Discovery, Science, Great Minds, Go Forward with Progression Partners, and three, special education contracts, the Charlton, Charlton School, Ketchum Grand Memorial School, Mechanic Belcia, Central School District, and Oak Hill School. Can I get a motion? Bob is first, Jason second. Any comments? All in favor? Six in favor, one abstention. Contract renewals, I'm going to do two together, our S R O and our triad group. Any, can I get a motion? Bob is first, Gusta's second. Any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to just recognize our S R O.
S R O's, yes.
They are a great example of community policing. They're all, with our schools, all of our students, but more importantly, they are, they are the backbone of ensuring that we have safe schools. If you brought them forward, I've heard minimal, almost zero complaints. And almost every event I'm at, I usually see one of, one of our S R Os. Getting involved, getting to understand, establishing a very positive presence. So I definitely, I'm proud of them.
And, you know, we talked about relationships, you were talking about relationships with goals, right? I mean, they form, they actually form relationships in the schools that they're in and the kids that they, that they're overseeing. So very positive, that was a great, I think that was a great endeavor that we embarked upon, okay. Did I do the motion yet? All in favor? Six in favor, one abstention. And free and reduced price, price policy, can I get a motion? Todd is first, Bob is second. Any questions? All in favor? Six in favor, one abstention. And use of district cell phones, can I get a motion? Bob is first, Gusta's second. Any comments? All in favor? Motion passes, one abstention. Oh, use of district credit cards, can I get a motion? Todd is first, Jason second. Any comments? All in favor? Six in favor, one abstention. Okay, so Mrs. Mylan is coming up for the acceptance of special education placements and appeal to the state review officer.
Good evening, any questions about the recommendations for student placements?
All in favor, I mean, can I get a motion? Gusta's first, Bob is second. All in favor? Motion passes, one abstention. Mrs. Bush will come up to talk about personnel.
Do, do you want to go over the appeal?
The appeal is separate. That was given to us, I will do it separate, I'm sorry. Vanessa, I'm sorry, let's do that separate, because that was given to us separate. Is there any, all right, can I get a motion on that? Bob's first, Jason's second. Any comments for what was placed in front of us on this? It's pretty detailed, pretty thorough. All in favor? Okay, motion passes, one abstention. Thanks, Bob. Mrs. Bush?
Yeah, good evening. There are two retirements to recognize this evening. Christopher Hatter is retiring after nineteen years as a school technologist in our Information Management Services Department. And John Timutson is retired after thirteen years as a bus driver. We will have two additional items, but I think you might want to do those separate.
Uh huh.
Okay. Does it staff?
Yep, so for the staffing, can I have a motion? Todd is first, Jason is second. Just comment, congratulations, Chris and John, on their retirement. And all in favor? Motion passes, one abstention. And then voting on the ratification of the C S C A contract. Can I get a motion? Bob is first, Todd is second. Any comments? Okay, all in favor? Motion passes, one abstention.
Got a motion on the, the different things contract.
Isn't that a part of the staffing?
Yes, it can be, okay.
That's why I'm making sure I'm in there.
You said, no, no.
Okay, first of all, let me just, let's just be clear on what we just talked about. So included in the staffing recommendations is Dr. Robinson's contract, which at the last meeting we talked about, and it's included, and I, we're all approving him. He's awesome, he's staying at least for another year, but, you know, we're happy to have him. Extremely happy to have him, and amazed with all the great things he does. So thank you, Dr. Robinson.
That's like, he just, swam, he just stayed a shot over here. He said, at least another year.
It's all good, he's staying, he's staying. Okay, so, do we have any more public comments? Okay, one thing, I want you to go to the, go to the order. So every year, this is a reord meeting, so we talk about, the board will, once again, we talk about our assignments. The board actually has assignments that, for P T A meetings, we go to, there are different committees that we sit on, and we kind of reorder them every year, depending, you know, we have new board members and we want to shuffle things up. We don't want the same board member sitting at the same place, at the same tables. So I will start to think about this and working with Gusta, and we'll bring it back to the team, and we'll talk about, you know, does this make sense? And we'll all agree upon it. It's, it's time to do that. So that's my piece, and now I have demonstrated tonight what it's not to do as a board president. Having said that, does anybody have any other comments for tonight? Get a vote, you're.
I just have a question, I've put in this for conference, do we commit now?
I guess, and we should send it up, make sure.
It's virtual again, right?
No, it's not, it's not.
I remember it's virtual.
Where is it?
I think it's, it's virtual, too.
I have a virtual option today.
Yeah, yeah, not.
So where is it this week?
New York City. So we'll get some information up, at least enough.
Good question, Naomi, Bob?
I don't see how we're just gonna go into people with a retreat in August, but at least make it out.
So we will set that up, I think maybe one, maybe two. We got, you know, I think it was some great discussions happening around the board table this year, so I think we want to continue some. And I would be looking then, Bob brings that up, if anybody has any comments or thoughts that they want to start thinking about, and further in my way, we can do so, and we can start to vet that. Jason, do you have a point? Okay. All right. So let's move to adjournment, can I have a motion?
You can vote now, Stacy.
I'm gonna, yeah. Come on, Stacy, get ready.
Stacy, first, can I have a second? Bob is second, all in favor?